Allison.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
Patrick hasn't touched base with you at all.
Um, I spoke to him this morning and his plan was to be on, so we give it a few more minutes.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased to see that the planning board has a quorum. All we need is for the selectmen to have one and we can get started.
Mm-hmm.
I apologize in advance to anyone listening. I have a three and a four-year-old in the next room. Uh, they've both promised sincerely that they would not interrupt. Uh, I believe that they meant it when they said it, but I also know these agreements tend to have a short memory. There's Pat.
I just texted him too.
I was just about to, yeah. Patrick, if you could turn your mic on? There we are. Good evening, Patrick.
One second. My audio is not coming through, guys.
Just, yeah, I can hear you.
It's probably your elevation, you're too high up.
Can you not hear us, Patrick?
Uh, that was the case a moment ago, but I've resolved that issue, so.
Okay.
It'd be good to go.
Mr. Cullen suggested that maybe you were too high in the air.
That's sometimes the case. I, I may hold the highest office in Nahat.
Very good. Very good. Uh, okay, so, uh, time is, where did everybody go here? Let's see. Okay, the time is six thirty-three. Uh, the July second meeting of the Nahat Selectmen is now called to order. So as far as, uh, opening comments, Patrick?
Oh, I, uh, just, just got back, uh, from the, uh, Frederick Douglass, uh, speech down in Swanscott. Saw, uh, many people down there and, uh, understand that not everybody can make it, but, uh, lovely event, uh, community event honoring the, uh, words of Frederick Douglass from, uh, eighteen fifty, I believe. Um, so I think that was a, a nice thing to get us started, uh, get us started into the July fourth weekend.
That's great. You know what? I'm, I'm so sorry to have missed it. Uh, it did, it did prompt me to, uh, to sit and read the speech and it really is an amazing, an amazing commentary of, of, of life in that, in that timeframe.
And I, I think our congratulations are in order, Rob. I don't know if you want to.
Well, almost.
Okay.
We still have a couple more centimeters to go.
Okay. Good luck.
Uh, so, yeah, I, I will also mention that, uh, uh, Slug McCanty will not be joining us tonight. Yeah, he had some recent, uh, elective surgery to, I believe, a hip and, uh, but he, uh, is looking forward to joining us at our very next meeting. So, opening comments, uh, announcements. Town hall will be closed, uh, tomorrow, Thursday, July third, and on Friday, July fourth, an observance of the July fourth holiday. Uh, trash recycling pickup during Fourth Holiday, Thursday, July third. The trash recycling will be collected as scheduled, uh, July fourth. The Friday collection will be moved to Saturday, July fifth. Please have your barrels curbside by seven AM on your scheduled collection day. No dogs on beaches, uh, through September thirtieth, each year except on Doggy Beach. Just a reminder there. Uh, residents' parking stickers, stickers for two twenty twenty-five are now available at nahat.org. Uh, stickers purchased from July first through December thirty-first are twenty dollars each. Metal recycling pickup, as always, metal white goods, TV computer recycling, last Saturday of each month until October twenty-fifth from eight to twelve PM, uh, eight AM to twelve PM noon behind the BPW garage. And then Market by the Seas on Saturday, July nineteenth, August sixteenth, and September twentieth, from ten AM to one PM at Flash Road Park. For more information or become a vendor, visit the market page at nahat.org or email kaytaylor@nahat.org. All right, that jumps us right into a planned meeting, joint meeting with the planning board. Uh, I see that we have a quorum and I, Dan Sheila, is there Sheila? Do you want to call, uh, your meeting to order? Sheila?
Sheila, you're on mute.
She is now. Sheila, you're on mute? Oh, she's got a phone and a, uh, online connection.
There we go.
Sheila, are you with us?
Sheila, why don't you try your phone link? We can't hear you.
Sheila, it looks like Tom has a connection.
Oh my, sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, you can.
Alright, sorry about that.
Sheila, you want to call? Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
It's alright, sorry. Do you want me to call the roll for the planning board?
Please do.
Okay, fine, thank you. Um, I want to call for Casey Carey.
Present.
Thank you. Um, Presula Hamilton is present. Do I have Rob Steinberg?
Uh, present.
Mark, no, Michael Cullenin?
Present.
Present. Steve Viviano?
I am here.
You're here. And have I missed anyone?
No, that's it.
Nope. That's it, okay. So we have, um, a quorum. And I will let the Board of Selectmen then, since we are at their meeting, continue with, um, the appointments. Thank you, Rob.
Okay, Sheila, uh, could you do me a favor and read off, uh, the, uh, names of the three individuals?
Yes, we have three individuals and I'll name them, um, in alphabetical order. We have, um, Anne Marie Grady on Rosemary, for Rosemary Road. We have Tom Hamilton at seventeen Kenny Avenue, and we have Scott Kirkland. And I don't actually know his number, but Emerald Road is his residence on Emerald Road. So we have three candidates.
Very good. Dan, or?
So my understanding is now each, the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board both need to nominate the candidates through a motion. Is that correct, Dan?
Well, you should first identify the seats open and then, and then start with the first seat in whatever order, doesn't matter, and then go with the second seat. They're going to be two different processes.
Mm-hmm.
So what's the first seat on the, on the list?
Um, let's see, uh, Capano? Is it?
No, not Capano, no, sorry.
What was the first one?
It was Anne Marie Grady.
No, no, no.
No, no, uh, whose seat do we fill in?
The seats we have open.
Who are we filling is for Michelle Capano and Shannon Bianchi.
Perfect, okay.
So which one are we filling first?
Uh, Michelle Capano's seat, um, expires officially in twenty twenty-nine if the person, um, appointed tonight runs for reelection next April.
Okay, so what are we starting?
We'll do Michelle Capano's.
So any nominations for Michelle's seat?
Um, I, this, this is Rob's. I, I moved to nominate Tom, um, Hamilton for that seat.
You know, save time. You can nominate all three people at the same time if that's what you want to do, or we can go one by one. It's up to you guys.
Yeah, why don't we do that, Rob?
I'll, I'll actually do one by one.
Okay, that's fine.
And then we'll just call the, the roll, and whoever gets the most votes will win that seat.
Okay, so, uh, we have a nomination for Tom Hamilton. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay.
And do we also have to nominate in second for the, uh, selectmen separately?
No, it's, you're basically one body now that are joined, it's a joint meeting, so.
Great, that works great.
Okay, uh, should we go to discussion at this point or do we nominate the next?
Auto motion, so discussion.
Discussion, okay. Any discussion as far as the nomination of Tom Hamilton?
No.
Hearing none. Roll call vote. Might need some help on this one, Sheila.
Okay, sorry, what did you say?
Uh, we need a roll call vote. Could you call the roll for your, uh, planning board?
Okay, having my motion made and seconded, I'm gonna call the roll call. Casey Carey?
Uh, yes.
Um, Michael Cullenin?
Yes.
Okay, I have Sheila Hamilton, uh, yes.
Sheila, well Sheila, you should abstain, abstain. Sheila, you, you can't nominate or vote here for your husband.
Oh, this is for Tom Hamilton?
Yeah.
That's fine, I abstain, sorry.
Okay, no, that's all right, thanks. Who's number, who's next?
Okay, um, it is Rob Steinberg.
Yes.
And then I have Steve Viviano.
And I am a yes.
Okay.
And then it's for the selectmen.
Patrick O'Reilly.
Uh, Pat O'Reilly, uh, aye.
And chair is also aye. Next nominee?
If any.
Oh, I was gonna nominate, um, Anne Marie Grady for, um, Shannon Bianchi's seat.
We're not, we're not filling Shannon's seat yet. We're still in Michelle's seat.
What, what would be the next, next thing, Dan? I thought there was a, we, we've nominated, we've, uh.
We've nominated and now we've got to appoint.
Well, hold on, is that the only nomination? We have two other potential candidates, so if there's no more nominations, that's great. Then there's only one person vying for Michelle's seat. But let's just make it clear that no other nominations are coming through, and that's perfectly fine. We just make sure their record is clean.
I don't know if Sheila can't do it, I will.
That's fine.
Say we, we're only nominating.
Would you, Rob?
Well, we're only nominating one person.
Okay, so the nominations are closed, then let's get the, someone move to appoint Tom and let's take a vote and move on to the next one.
I move, uh, Michael Cullenin moved to appoint Tom.
Okay.
I second.
Discussion, if any?
So. Sheila, nothing? So I'm a little confused.
So Steve here, Dan, what we're doing is copasthetic, right? This, this nomination that, that will turn into an appointment, that appointment will be fulfilled until the end of the term, or is that appointment going to be filled temporarily until the next town?
No, it just goes to the next town election and then Tom can be on the ballot once and then, this is only, these both only go to the next town election.
Understood. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
You bet. So if there's no discussion, you can vote.
Yeah, uh, we've gone through discussion. Sheila, do you want to call the roll as far as?
Yes, I'll call the roll, so, um, and can you reread the motion?
Rob?
The, the motion is to appoint Tom Hamilton to the, uh, seat of, uh,
Michelle Capano?
Michelle Capano, um, ending, I guess, April twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so, here, so that's, thank you very much. So the roll call vote will be for, um, Casey Carey?
Uh, yes.
Michael Cullenin?
Yes.
Sheila Hamilton, it stains. I have Rob Steinberg.
Yes.
And I have Steve Viviano.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, back to the Board of Selectmen.
And Patrick?
Pat O'Reilly, aye.
And Rob Tibbo, aye.
All right, so that's done. Now we do the same thing for Shannon's seat.
Shannon's.
Good job.
Nomination?
Um, I will nominate, uh, Anne Marie Grady for the seat that was vacated by, um, Shannon Bianchi.
Do we have a second?
I, I second.
Discussion.
Okay, so we have, perfect.
Hearing none?
Well.
I, I will say one thing is this, she has been at every meeting since the, uh, we've been putting together this final MBTA, uh, document. She's been a great help, both of them have. Tom has too.
And for those of you who don't know her, um, she's a nuclear engineer and, uh, has had some very good contributions and we appreciate her, her attendance at recent meetings.
Very much so.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Just in, in terms of Dan's, uh, recommendation, I think we would request any further nominations, right, Rob?
Yeah, right.
Sheila?
Should I take a roll call vote now?
So.
I'm gonna call on Casey Carey.
Yes.
And Michael Cullenin? Michael, are you there?
Sorry about that, yes, yes.
Yes, it's a yes, thank you. Okay, so Sheila Hamilton is a yes. Rob Steinberg?
Is a yes.
Okay, and then Steve Viviano?
Yes.
Okay, so the board ha, Planning Board has voted and, um, we have a majority vote of the Planning Board.
Okay, Patrick?
For Anne Marie Grady, thank you.
Uh, Pat O'Reilly, aye.
And Rob Tibbo, aye. Unanimous vote?
Yay.
The seat, uh, of Shannon Bianchi.
Was that the nomination or the actual point?
That was the nomination.
Nomination.
That was the nomination.
Does anyone nominate?
Yeah.
Is that, but any more nominations?
No more nominations.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so now we go for the vote?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll take the roll call vote of the planning board. Casey Carey?
We, we have to move.
Uh, yes.
Wait, we have to move, Sheila. No, we nominated.
What did you say, Rob?
So, yeah, so, uh, Rob Steinberg moves to appoint Mary Ann Grady to fill the seat of Shannon Bianchi for the period ended April twenty twenty-six.
I second that.
And her name is Anne Marie, not Mary Ann.
I'm sorry. Anne Marie, I apologize.
That's okay. That's okay.
Roll call vote?
Okay, so the roll call vote. Casey Carey?
Yes.
Okay, Michael Cullenin?
Yes.
Uh, Sheila Hamilton is a yes.
Yes.
Rob Steinberg?
Is a yes.
And I have Steve Viviano.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Okay, now we can move on to the Board of Selectmen.
Patrick?
Uh, Pat O'Reilly, aye.
And Rob Tibbo's, an aye. Vote is unanimous.
Wow.
Congratulations.
I'd just like to say, thank you. Anne Marie Grady. I just want to mention that Scott Kirkland, um, um, did, um, run at the election in twenty twenty-five, um, and ran against our current member, Michael Cullenin, who did beat him, and he did put in, um, a letter for either a, um, regular, um, member or an alternate member. So will you be posting, um, for an, an alternate member since Tom Hamilton now has vacated the alternate seat?
We would post Sheila for that, through, through Allison, I think.
Oh.
That's right, we'd post that separately. It'd be the same process.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, and then applications will go to Kristen, yeah.
Right, yep, okay, perfect. I appreciate that.
Sheila, I just want to clarify for, for our board. What's the lead time on posting, Dan, before, like, we couldn't appoint somebody tonight, right? Could we appoint someone at the next meeting as an alternate or?
Yeah, I know of no minimum timeframe except for the open meeting law forty-eight hours, but it'd be wise to, you know, put it at least a week to get some interesting candidates.
Yeah, awesome.
Perfect.
So, Dan, I, I believe we need to move to adjourn the planning board.
Yep.
Board, so Rob Steinberg moves to adjourn, um, the planning board meeting.
I, I second that, Steve.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take the roll call vote. Casey Carey?
Yes.
Michael Cullenin?
Yes.
Sheila Hamilton? Yes, and Rob Steinberg? I said yes.
Is a yes.
And Steve Viviano?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I just want to ask one thing, um, of the Board of Selectmen and, um, there will be then a posting for the alternate membership and that the new member, Tom Hamilton, has to go see, um, and Anne Marie Grady to, um, get sworn in by the town clerk? That's correct, right, Dan?
That's right. I assume they've taken their, um, open meeting law training and the, um, other, well, maybe not Anne Marie has, but council.
So will, um, Allison, she'll let Kristen know and Diane Dumphy know, correct?
Yep, I can do that.
Okay, that'll be perfect. All right, appreciate it. Thank you. And Allison, I'm sorry I didn't, um, congratulate you last night at our meeting, but I just want you to know, congratulations as the acting town administrator. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheila.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, that ends it, concludes the planning board then. Thank you, goodnight.
Thank you, thanks, Sheila.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Thank you, Sheila, goodnight.
Goodnight, bye-bye.
Okay, I don't think I'll ever get any good at that, Dan. There's just too many moving parts.
You'll be fine at it, don't worry about it. Repetition.
Hopefully not using.
Okay, uh, so we've got a vote to appoint a member to the Public Safety Design Selection Committee. Uh, the, uh, and, okay, no, just jump right into it. I move, I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Officer Heather Leary to replace Sergeant John Monaco on the Public Safety Design Selection Committee. Do I have a second?
Uh, seconded.
Discussion. Okay, well.
I can chime in on this. I, I sit on the committee. Um, we met last night and, um, Chief Antrim, who chairs the committee, asked that I, vote on this today. Um, we didn't have a quorum at last night's meeting, so, um, the committee is set to meet again next Tuesday. I mean, it was important to get this appointment done so that Heather can help us review the RFQ before we get it out, so. She'll be thankful.
I appreciate her stepping up and, uh, we thank Sergeant Monaco for his assistance, uh, this far, so, um, we're, okay, we have a vote on that?
Yeah, motion made and seconded, so, Pat O'Reilly, aye.
And Rob Tibbo, aye. Uh, we have a vote to amend Kelly Green's lease agreement. I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize Town Council to enter into negotiation with R and B Management LLC to amend the Kelly Green's lease in order to make the various due dates consistent with the fiscal year rather than the calendar year. Uh, do we have a second?
Uh, seconded.
Uh, discussion. Allison, I, you might have something to say about this?
Yeah, so, um, in the, the way that the current lease is set up, there's a, a few places that we're looking to, um, amend the date so that it aligns with the fiscal year, which is the way the town operates accounting-wise. Right now, um, the lease payment schedule, which is, um, one section of the lease, um, it runs from March to February of each year, um, which is not on a fiscal year basis, and I think that happened because that's actually when the lease started. Um, so we look, we're looking to adjust that, and also there's a subsection, um, that relates to capital improvements, and if the, um, if R and B management makes, um, any capital improvements, they are allowed to deduct that from their lease payments if those capital improvements are approved by the golf court, the golf committee. Um, and there's been some confusion in the past where, you know, a bunch of these, um, improvements were approved and then they were shown to the town, um, but they crossed different fiscal years, so it was difficult for me to credit those payments when we're collecting lease payments on a fiscal year basis. So in order to just align the lease, you know, and they're paying the town on a monthly basis so that, you know, accounts receivable lines up with the town's accounting fiscal year. fiscal year, that's the reason for this change.
All right, and it sounds like an excellent reason to make the change. Anything further? Okay, roll call vote.
Pat O'Reilly, aye.
And Rob Tibbo, aye. Motion carries. We now have a vote to amend the Ocean View lease agreement. I move the Board of Selectmen grant Ocean View's request to extend the time it has to use a seasonal tent on its existing outside event space from the first week in May to the third week in May and remove any language from the current lease requiring the Board of Selectmen's annual review and approval of same. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Discussion. Allison, can you help us a little bit with what we're doing here?
Yeah, so I wasn't even aware of this. I have a very old agreement with the Ocean View. So I met with Dan today and he provided me, there's a subsequent agreement that the Board of Selectmen signed off on dating back to 2001 about this outdoor tent. And right now, the agreement says that they're allowed to have it up through the first week of March, so they've requested to keep it up for an extra few weeks, which is why it's coming before the Board.
Mr. Chair, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, it looks like a representative from the Ocean View is here to speak if he wants to provide more information for us.
Sure, good evening, everybody. Thank you, Allison, for the background. Hello, fellow neighbors. Mike Alon, owner of the Ocean View. Yes, we are bringing this before you, seeking an additional extension for the operation of the tent. We're looking to be able to operate through the third weekend of May where it's currently the first weekend in May. So we're looking for approximately a two-week extension on that tent. We've seen a, you know, just the interests has changed in terms of the predictability of weather during those early May months and the appetite for brides doesn't really change until after that Memorial Day weekend. So we feel that being able to extend a little bit more certainty in terms of weather protection during those other two questionable weeks of May might help be a bit more appetizing to our couples. We're not looking to change any of our occupancy and we're not looking to change anything else and it would still be the same tent that goes up seasonally now.
Okay. So, Mr. Glad, could you tell me a little bit about your request to remove any language from the current lease that requires the Board of Selectmen's annual review and approval?
Mr. Chair, I can address that, actually. I don't think that came from Mike. That actually came from Tony, of all people. And that was, that language only added to accommodate Josh, who had a concern back when, as Allison mentioned, we signed the first addendum to this contract and he was just concerned about there being some golfers or some people from the public having issues with the extra time they were offering at that point. Since that time, it's my understanding that that has never come to fruition and there's been no issue at all with the tent as it stands, pun intended currently. So the thought was to take that off the Selectmen's list of things to do and also give Ocean View a level of comfort so they don't have to worry about, you know, getting, you know, not having the ability to rent that out for those other two weeks.
Okay, and you're comfortable with this, Dan, as far as protecting the town's interest?
Yeah, absolutely. I would not be comfortable if we were getting complaints. I know of none. And Mike, you might shed some light on that. I don't know if you've got any complaints either. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. We take a lot of pride in, you know, neighborly harmony and, you know, we do also have, you know, police details at all of our functions, you know, as well, so. I'm proud of, you know, the reputation that we've built and, you know, we can plan to continue having that same sensitivity to our neighbors.
Okay. Patrick, any thoughts?
No, I have no objections to the substance of this request and, you know, it seems like a minor, minor change and as long as it's gone through, you know, Dan, as long as you've had the chance to review it and there are no complaints, I'm inclined to approve.
Okay, all right. Roll call vote.
Pat O'Reilly, aye.
And Rob Tibbo, aye. Good to go for Mr. Glad.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the support. It's comforting to be in a community where we're welcomed and supported from the administrative level. So thank you for understanding the need. I know it is two weeks, but it does help us, so thank you for the support.
Well, I'm glad we could help.
Thank you. Have a great fourth, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye bye. Thank you.
Next, we have a vote to accept the Tudor Beach buoy petition. I move the Board of Selectmen recognize the petition submitted by town residents and approve the request therein to allow residents to display salvaged buoys, that being lobster buoys, during summer months on the railing along the public seawall above Tudor Beach. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
As a discussion, we see here that the original petition was sent before in backup documents. The petition is to set a policy surrounding the buoy installation at Tudor Beach. This would be a seasonal installation where the buoys will be hung at Tudor Beach during the summer months and during the winter, the DPW will continue to store them. Any further discussion?
Well, Allison can speak to it, but I remember we talked about this with Tony and it sounds like this was an informal arrangement for a number of years and I think it has broad broad support in town and, you know, some folks got together and wanted to make it a, make sure it went through a formal approval, so happy to do so.
Okay, very good. Roll call vote.
Pat O'Reilly, aye.
And Rob Tibbo, aye. Next, we have a vote to accept the petition to name the Lowland Softball Field Rick Malletti Field. I would like to postpone this vote until a future meeting as Gene Canty has expressed a desire to be part of that discussion. Do we have any, any concerns with that postponement?
None for me.
Allison's shaking her head no?
No, yeah, I think it's fair to postpone if Gene wants to be involved in the discussion.
Okay. All right, good. Consider that, you know, move it on to a future meeting if we could, Allison, then. Thank you so much. Let's see, petition. And now we have a vote to prohibit bicycles or motorized vehicles on the town wharf and amend the rules and regulations. This is a recommendation that I made in my capacity as Wharfinger and further study of an existing document, which is basically what is this titled? Rules and regulations governing the use of parks, beaches, and the wharf. And this was formed by Selectmen and voted and approved in November of 2015. So in further review of the document, we do see a reference to bicycles not being used on the wharf and we also see reference to vehicles of any size or type. That would seem to cover it and it was my error in not catching that and thank you so much, Allison, for pointing out that, that error and that's I'm surprised I missed that because I've read this thing a dozen times and still find things new all every time I read it. So anyway, what I'm looking for, I guess, tonight, Patrick, is just a, an approval. I would like to place a seasonal sign summer only on the wharf that clearly indicates that there will be no bicycles or motor vehicles of any kind. And my reasoning there is when we start the sailing program each year, that can bring a group of children of up to twenty-five on the pier at any, on any given day. We add to that another sometimes half dozen, dozen other children who might be using the pier for recreational purposes. And they can, it can be quite chaotic. So when they try to bring their bikes out there and park them or just lay them on the deck so that everybody has to step around them, that creates a problem. When we have somebody going out and out there onto the pier with these electric scooters or electric bicycles, I've seen them myself, they're moving right along. So I'm very concerned that we're going to have an accident, a significant accident, if we continue to not try to, do something to address this. Again, my solution is to create a sign reminding people that these vehicles are not allowed onto the pier. Put it out seasonally while the sailing program is operating and, you know, see if we can't slow things down a little bit, make it more amenable for residents to be out there and not have to worry about being bumped by one of these scooters or bicycles.
So, so Rob, just from my understanding, you're not looking for any change to the existing rules and regulations governing the wharf? Just signage?
Just signage, that's correct. And again, it was, I didn't think that this was broad enough to cover these, these concerns, the electric bicycles, the electric scooters, but it is, it is broad enough. So it brings me down to just making sure that everybody is comfortable with putting some signage out there again, to try and deter, you know, and control the issue.
That's certainly fine with me, Allison. Does that, does that work? Can we get that done?
Yeah, so is that something that you would want Zach to construct or how would you want it to appear?
My thought was that, that we would create a sign and it could be as simple as one of the sign boards that we have out there now, which is the plastic board that fits out into an A-frame style, almost like a bulletin board. We use them for, the police use them for parking regulation and such as that. If we had something like that, that we could just place out during the day, we could even have the sailing program, kids put it there and then take it in at the end of the day.
Okay.
Just to try and quiet things down while they're working.
Sure, I know Zach works with a company often for sign for sign making throughout town, so we can have a discussion with him on what his thoughts are, so.
That's great, all right. I can touch base with him also with some language that I've come across, it might be helpful.
Okay.
So we're good to go on that one. And let's see, so that brings us to ongoing business. I'm not aware of ongoing business reporting here. Okay, so we're preserving East Point, nothing new to report there. And now we are at the Town Administrator's Report.
So that's me, I guess.
Yeah, and we've only got one, and we've only got one in the meeting this time.
So I just, obviously, July 4th is this week, so everybody in town has been busy preparing for the celebration. I thought I'd just kind of walk through the events that are going on and we have you know, so many great volunteers and residents and town hall staff that have been really helpful in pulling everything together. So there is, I want to direct people to the town website. I wanted to share my screen, if I can do that. See how I that one, let's see, here we go.
What could possibly go wrong?
Yeah. Exactly. So everyone's seeing the town website here?
We can.
Okay, so at the top of the website, it says there's July 3rd and 4th events. And if you click here, it really lays out, you know, everything that's going on over the next few days. So if you scroll you know, you can scroll through this as you like, but we really want to direct residents, you know, to this page because it does hold all the information. You can see here the trash information that you discussed earlier. On July 3rd is, I'm gonna see if there's, it had it on here, July 3rd is the Horribles Day Parade, so you'll see that here. It's from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. I believe registration begins at 4:30 and the parade starts at Spring Road Basketball Courts and ends at the Flash Road Park. So, you know, individuals are encouraged to participate and dress up in costumes. It can be red, white, and blue. This has been a tradition in town and we're lucky to have volunteers that continue to make this happen. Also, tomorrow are the Lynn and Swampscott fireworks, those start approximately 9:00 p.m. So just a reminder that Lynn Shore Drive will be shut down for vehicle traffic starting at 6:00 p.m. And then our event is on the 4th, so the actual 4th is when our fireworks are. And so early that morning, we start with the Tortoise and the Hare Road Race. That starts at 8:00 a.m. There's a 7:30 a.m. registration. The race begins right out front of the fire station. All ages are welcome and there's a one-mile and a three-miler option for those. And so if you come to the town webpage and you scroll down, it shows you the courses that are available. I think it's towards the bottom. And then right after that, following that, are the field races starting at 9:00 a.m. The field races are held on the soccer fields behind the fire station. There's prizes and medals that will be given out. There's a fifty-yard dash, three-legged race, and an egg toss. So that's always a lot of fun. I know I'll be bringing my son to that. And then I just wanted to highlight, you know, kind of the road closures that are happening in town. And if you go again to the website, you'll see there's a bunch of maps here and if you click on them, they do expand a little bit. So I want to highlight that the wharf lot and the ramp close at noon time. And then Willow Road from Summer Street to Wharf Street will be closed at 5:00 p.m. And so that's what, you know, this, this highlights. This is the Wharf Street, that's the one that's closing at 5:00. And then at 7:00 p.m., there's a bunch of road closures that are highlighted by these red lines and that includes Willow Road from the Ocean View to Ocean Street, Willow Road from Ocean to Wharf, Emerald Road from Pond to Willow, Valley Road from Spring to Willow, Ocean Street from Nahat Road to Willow Road, and then both Winter Street and Summer Street from Nahat Road to Willow Road. And we're, you know, we're gonna have police staffing this. We have a bunch of details working. So it's just to really make it safe for everybody to be walking around and going down to enjoy the fireworks. There's going to be a band at the wharf that starts at 6:00 p.m. It's the Mojo Slim Band that has performed a couple of years now down there. And then town hall staff also secured an ice cream truck that'll be there. So in previous years, we've had a food vendor. We received some feedback that because a lot of people grill for the Fourth of July or go to family parties, that there's not that much interest in having food down at the wharf, but everybody always has room for ice cream, so that we decided to keep the, you know, keep some kind of refreshment down there. So I think that'll be a big hit. And I want to thank Kristen Taylor and our summer interns for setting that up. So the fireworks start at approximately 9:00 p.m. from Bailey's Hill. So also on the website, if I close out of this, there's this other map here that kind of shows what's happening at Bailey's Hill. So on July 4th, there's no parking beginning at 7:00 p.m. from Gardner, Tri Mountain, and Bass Point Road. There's also no pedestrian access in the Bailey's Hill Park. That's, you know, the fireworks get delivered fairly early and the fire chief makes sure And the fire chief makes sure that that area is closed off, so there's no pedestrians in the area near, you know, where the fireworks are being set off. You'll also notice this note here, there's no parking on the even side of Gardner, the ocean side of Bass Point and the Bailey's Hill side of Tri Mountain Road. And then starting at 7:00 PM, this will all be one-way traffic. Again, you can click on this and it'll zoom in so you can see it a little bit more closely. And then also on, there's a third map that just shows there's no parking on these designated streets. So it's starting at 6:00 PM and all vehicles must be removed. Police will be ticketing and possibly towing if any cars are left on there. Again, it's to allow access for everybody to, you know, walk down to the fireworks safely and to leave safely. So this, we've done this in prior years. It's very similar to the plan that we've had in prior years. And it has worked really well. So I wanted to highlight those. So again, if you have any questions, you know, about what's coming up tomorrow or on Friday, I encourage you to go to nahat.org and all the information is pretty much right here. So I, I hope everybody has a great holiday. I think we're going to have excellent weather. And again, I just want to thank everybody. I know Jen McCarthy works so hard to fundraise. Truly grateful for her. And it's such a great tradition in town that I hope everybody really enjoys and is safe. So that's all I really had. That's the big event.
That was great.
I don't think anybody wants to hear about fiscal year end.
Not just yet. Thank you, Allison. That was, that was very good. A wonderful, wonderful resource the, the town website is for this event is. There's a lot of information to be had and I, I can only hope that it, you know, people go to that and decide that they're going to jump in and participate in some, some of these road races.
I will be running.
You will be.
Yes.
I know Dan runs regular too, so we might see him out there.
All right, yeah.
Maybe, we'll see.
Okay, all good. So let's see. That brings us down to citizens' comment. Do we have any, anyone would like to offer some thoughts on an issue in town? Going once? Okay, we'll move on and we are going to have an executive session tonight. Okay, we'll adjourn to executive session then. I move the Board of Selectmen vote to adjourn to executive session pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. Strategy regarding Christian Howard v. Town of Nahat, a matter pending in the Essex Superior Court, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. And I, the chair, do declare that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and we will not return to open session. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Discussion? Roll call vote.
Pat, Pat O'Reilly, aye.
Rob Tibbo, aye. Okay, we will adjourn to executive session and thank you very much for those who have joined us for the meeting tonight.
All right, now I just need to stop recording here.
Is Ted here for the executive session?
No.
No. Oh, and we've got another.
Jason Cruddy is here for the.
Okay.
If Ted McCarthy could sign off, that would be a great help to us. There we go.
I just, just kicked him off.
However it worked.